Good evening and welcome to the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Education meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. This meeting is now called to order. I understand Director Mersbrock is joining us via phone. Thank you to those who have come tonight to share your thoughts. We will hear all public comment that has been requested via green sheets on the table by the door. Public comment will begin after the superintendent and board reports. Do we have a motion to approve the revised agenda? We're revising the agenda tonight because we're removing B A twenty-two dash eleven slash six from the consent agenda. Superintendent Bush, do you have a comment on that?
I will briefly comment on that particular agenda item. This was on the board's agenda this evening. It was a policy regarding the OSHA requirements. Due to the proceedings that happened on Friday, the U.S. Supreme Court on Friday did rule to move that forward with OSHA. However, the Iowa Division of Labor is not adopting that federal policy at this point in time. That was communicated late Friday afternoon. So at this point in time, we are putting this policy on pause. We'll follow the Iowa Division of Labor guidance on this until future notice unless we're advised otherwise. So this particular policy is now on hold.
Great. Thank you for that update. Do we have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
I move that the revised agenda of Monday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Humblez, Director Borchiding, Director Newman, Director Garlock, Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Mersbrock.
Aye.
President Tominski.
Aye. Moving on to superintendent's report, Superintendent Bush, I will turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you very much, President Tominski. Good evening, Board of Directors, and good evening, participants. Good to see you this evening. Here it is. Happy two thousand and twenty-two, happy new year. This time of year is really happy new year because we start thinking about next new year for the school perspective. And for us, this time of year starts preschool and kindergarten enrollment already. So we have a deadline coming up already, not deadline, it's really a launching date, February first. February first, we'll initiate our preschool, alternative kindergarten and kindergarten enrollment and registration. Just a reminder to mark calendars on that. It's a very exciting time of the year, especially for our newest learners in our environment. But just want folks to note that that's coming up and we'll be pushing out a lot of communication around that. If you should look at our website and/or social media, this is also coming out via our schools. We have a lot more information that families can link on and find more information about how to get your preschooler, alternative kindergartner or kindergartner enrolled for next year. Next, we just want to make sure this was recognized during a public comment last board meeting, but just want to make sure that we give some recognition here to our teachers who are initially board certified and recertified their national board certification. So here they are, two of our elementary teachers and then Mr. Polly at Harding Middle School as well. This is truly an extremely rigorous process and we just want to thank our teachers for the commitment to that process and congratulations to them on that effort. A lot of work went into that, all under a pandemic and crisis. They did that on top of their other work as well. So congratulations to Holland, Brittany, and John for those efforts. And then lastly, just a thank you to our community, the West Willow Elementary staff and students for hosting us and board members for your attendance that evening for the ribbon cutting that happened on December twenty-first. It was a great night to be able to share that new facility with everyone and really exciting to see so many of our community members be able to come in and see what that new facility is doing. And then the students were our hosts that evening and granted some lovely tours and just want to thank everyone for participating in that great night prior to the winter break. So thank you to everyone who made that event possible. And really, that's all I have for you this evening.
Absolutely beautiful school and I was glad that I had that student help me with those scissors. Do we have any board reports? Next, we will move on to those who have requested to address the board. Laurel, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address the board?
Yes, we do.
How many speakers do we have signed up for public comment?
I have twelve speakers signed up this evening.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to please state your name and address for the record when called to the podium. With twelve speakers this evening, you will be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the board and choose not to speak, it is in the interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. In order to abide by the open meeting laws, I'd like to remind our speakers that there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions and comments from the individuals speaking. We have received all requests and will listen to all submitted. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board will have no tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Laurel, please call our first speaker.
Our first speaker this evening is Barb Rutterham. Barb is here to thank the school board for keeping kids safe.
I'd rather not say where I live because of the hostile environment, but I am here tonight to thank our Cedar Rapids School Board for working tirelessly, tirelessly, and okay to protect our kids and the staff and the families that they go home to. I work with the elderly and, you know, many of them haven't seen their grandchildren for a very long time because this pandemic continues to be prolonged when it really doesn't have to if people would just wear their masks and get vaccinated with a perfectly safe vaccine. So thank you very much, all of you, for doing such hard work for our kids.
Our next speaker is Lee Bolin. Lee is here to speak about masks and vaccines.
Hi there. My name's Lee Bolin. I emailed Noreen Bush here a little while ago and I'm just waiting for an email back from her and in public relations with the school district. I put together just some basic information and I think it'd be important for the board here to ponder. Per the CDC, over nine percent of the population was diagnosed with ADHD in two thousand and sixteen. No known cause, but Big Pharma has profit, but Big, but Big Pharma is there for the profit and has a lifetime prescription of pills for these kids. Also, per the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences, twenty-four million people currently have autoimmune disease. No known cause, but Big Pharma has your solution, a lifetime prescription for profit. Per the CDC, currently seventeen percent of our children aged three to seventeen were diagnosed with a developmental disability. And one in forty-four children now are currently diagnosed with autism. The CDC currently recommends seventy-two vaccines for our children up to the age of eighteen now. That's six times more than what we received thirty years ago. The CDC states that it continues to use aluminum as the control in all its vaccine double-blind studies. So they're testing all these vaccines that you guys deem safe. They're testing those with aluminum as the double-blind study. That's per the CDC. Aluminum's a neurotoxin. So here, aluminum's only deemed safe by the CDC while in vaccines. Otherwise, it's a neurotoxin. Who lobbies the CDC? Most? Big Pharma does. They are an order-out-of-chaos entity, just like the Freemason, Jesuit Order, and Rockefeller Foundation, who also funds our public education system and Western medicine for profit. Rockefeller's Standard Oil partnered up with I.G. Farben to fund the Nazis while testing vaccines and other pharmaceutical drugs on prisoners. I.G. Farben and American Alco, Aluminum Company, were the first ones to implement these neurotoxins upon us. It makes, it makes us dastardly and submissive. Pfizer was fined two-point-three billion, the largest healthcare fraud settlement and the largest criminal fine ever imposed in the United States. Not trustworthy. Johnson and Johnson knew for decades, decades that asbestos was in their baby partner. Are these companies you trust your children with? Which Big Pharma corporation do you trust most and why? Mandating masks and vaccines is a huge overreach on our freedom that comes with huge consequences. Is the decision regarding masks and recommending COVID-nineteen vaccines for our children based on monetary gains, fear-based marketing by Big Pharma corporations, or critical thinking? How many students in the Cedar Rapids School District had died or have been hospitalized from COVID-nineteen? Is this the information you're using or do you blindly trust our Rockefeller public education system? Let's take the masks off So I emailed Noreen Bush here. So this is what it says. So my son, who's a student in the Cedar Rapids Community School District, was vaccinated for COVID-nineteen. He had negative side effects. He then developed COVID-nineteen two months later with that and public information regarding the COVID vaccine. It appears, sorry. So my son was vaccinated for COVID-nineteen, got side effects from it, and then, and then, I'm sorry, he got side effects from COVID-nineteen. And, I'm sorry, I lost track here. We, I'm sorry, he developed COVID-nineteen, he had negative side effects from the vaccine and then he also developed COVID-nineteen afterwards. The vaccines here clearly aren't effective, nor are they safe. So let's not be promoting them for our children and our staff. I appreciate that we took that off the table today. Let's, let's keep it that way. Appreciate you guys.
Our next speaker is Dan Carolyn. Dan is here to speak about the mask mandate.
Hi, I'm Dan Carolyn. I'm Brentwood Drive in Cedar Rapids. I'm a teacher at Kennedy High School. I just want to say a few things about the mask mandate. Nobody here woke up this morning wondering what they could do to harm children. Nobody. I believe that. None of us, parents, the grandparents, the aunts, the uncles, the teachers, nobody here was thinking that way. That's the simple truth and I hope we can all understand that. And I hope that we can move forward with conversations about how to best take care of our children in a manner that is civil and, you know, gets people listening. All of us have the best interests of children in mind. I think we just differ on how to go about doing what's best for the kids. So like most not all people, I don't really like wearing a mask. I'm a teacher and especially when I'm teaching, I don't like wearing one. One of my favorite jobs, one of my favorite parts about my job is to see the smiles on my students' faces as I teach them and as I try to, you know, set up a comfortable and safe environment for my students in my classroom. It's very important to me. The mask-wearing is an inconvenience and I'll admit that. I don't like it, but it's what's best, I believe, for the kids and for me and for my colleagues. I was raised to know that sometimes as an adult and even as a child, you have to do things you don't want to do because those things are good for you or good for the greater community. And my parents never, ever backed down from that. They never backed down from demanding that my sisters and I do the right thing, even if it meant that my parents would be unpopular for a little while with their kids. And I really thank them for that because that's made all the difference in all of our lives in my family. I think maybe dealing with masks is a bit easier for me than it is for some. I lived and taught in Japan for a number of years where wearing a mask is normal during cold and flu season. It's universal, okay? Students, office workers, shop customers, whatever, if you're out in public and you're around people in a classroom from kindergarten all the way through college, you know, you wear a mask in public when you have a cold because you don't want to share your germs with other people. And some people just wear it as a preventative too, okay? Maybe somebody else is sick, I don't want to wear, I don't want to get it, and so they wear it. You know, and it's a common courtesy. It's like saying please or thank you, you know? And it hasn't really done too much harm in Japan, I suppose. They still have the second highest longevity rate in the world, so I think things are going okay. You know, it's not really going to do us a whole lot of harm. And again, I just want to express the importance of understanding that we, none of us woke up trying to think about how we can harm kids. We all really want what's best for kids, right? We all have the best interests of kids in mind and we need to think more about talking with each other and listening to one another rather than talking at each other. That's the only place where, that's the only way we're going to get to the place where we're really doing right by the kids. And that's the most important thing. So I want to thank the board for making the decisions based on data and the recommendations of healthcare professionals. As a teacher in the district, to be honest, I don't always agree with every decision that the board makes, okay? That's normal, all right? But I always, always believe that the board makes those decisions in good faith and with the best interests of the children in mind. And I do always believe that. These are not easy times to be in a leadership position and to make decisions that are sometimes unpopular, but it's always essential, I believe, to do what's right based on experience and evidence and to really keep an eye on the long-term common good rather than bend to the short-term convenience and comfort. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Angie Stahl. Angie is here to speak about the oath of office.
Hi, I'm Angie Stahl. I live on Rogers Road in Cedar Rapids. I was just looking today through some of my posts and ten years ago, I had posted on Facebook that said, "My poor babies, they've all gotten colds. I hope we can get through this." So it sounds familiar right now as far as that goes with the colds. The oath of office, so my good friend Russell Hotchkiss was not allowed to come in today, so I'm going to read some things on behalf of him. The oath of office, the Board of Directors are officials of the state. As a public office, each director must pledge to uphold the Iowa and the United States Constitution and carry out the responsibilities of the office to the best of the board's members' abilities. Each newly-elected director will take the oath of office prior to any action taken as a school official. The oath of office is taken by each new director elected at the school election at or before the organizational meeting of the board. In the event of an appointment or special election to fill a vacancy, the new board member will take the oath of office within ten days of the appointment or election. Directors elected to office of the board will also take the same oath of office by replacing office of board, of Board of Directors with the title of the office to which they were elected. The oath of office is administered by this board secretary and does not need to be given at a board, board meeting. In the event the board secretary is absent, the oath is, is may be administered by another director. They kind of make this wordy, so it's, it's one of those things because it's legal. When you are taking the oath of office, they all read to you, "Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of your name and then of the district as now and hereafter requires, required by law?" And so then you say, "Yes, I will, I do." So Russell has done a lot of emailing and a lot of research and this is from him as far as that goes. Cedar Rapids School Board District violated their authority by requiring masks. For the Iowa code states that a school district can mandate what a school may not wear, but they cannot mandate what a student can wear, in which, at a meeting with Superintendent Bush, which he had met with you, Superintendent Bush, you stated that that is correct, in quotes, which she confirmed that the mask mandate was illegal. So school dress code policies is what you cannot wear, not what you're supposed to wear. He says that he also reiterated that they are committing Munchausen syndrome by proxy, now known as fictitious disorder imposed on another, which you are because you're not, none of you are medical, you're not medical certified. I informed them that they were committing coercion. Corruption is rape. It's non-consensual. He also reiterated that there still have, they still have not obtained informed consent from anyone in accordance with the FDA Code twenty-one, USC, three-six-zero, BBB-dash-three, and its forty-six-page document on how to obtain informed consent. I was at those vaccine clinics for the schools. There was no way that they were telling the, the pros and cons of that vaccine. And it's not even a vaccine anyways. It's a death shot. I reiterate to them that they were practicing medical without a license per Iowa Code one-four-seven-point-two and one-four-seven-A-point-two-one. I reiterated to them that they were violating every one of the Nuremberg Code. I informed them that if the vaccine clinics they advocated for did not obtain information consent, FDA case twenty-one, USC, three-six-zero, BBB-dash-three, per its forty-six-page document on how to obtain informed consent, that the Cedar Rapids School District could and would be held liable. I reiterated to them that I placed them on notice on November twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-one.
Excuse me, Ms. Stahl, your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Craig Sealy, Jr. Craig is here to speak about ideologies, agendas, sources, teaching methods.
First one of my favorite books. I hope you write this down. It is highly, highly documented. America's God and Country.
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, Craig Sealy, Cedar Rapids, Iowa.
Thank you.
America's God and Country, Encyclopedia of Quotations, written by William J. Federer, F-E-D-E-R-E-R, highlighting America's noble heritage, profound quotes from founding fathers, presidents, statesmen, scientists, constitution, court decisions for use in speeches, papers, debates, and essays. For quotes, "The propitious smiles of heaven can never be expected on a nation that disregards the eternal rules of order and right which heaven itself has ordained," George Washington, seventeen-eighty-nine, inaugural address. "I therefore beg leave to more that henceforth's prayers imploring the assistance of heaven and its blessings on our deliberations be held in the assembly every morning," Benjamin Franklin, seventeen-eighty-seven, Constitutional Convention. "I tremble for my country when I reflect that God is just, that his justice cannot sleep forever," Thomas Jefferson, seventeen-eighty-one, Notes on the State of Virginia. "It behooves us then to humble ourselves before the offended power to confess our national sins and to pray for clemency and forgiveness," Abraham Lincoln, eighteen-sixty-three, Proclamation of National Fast. Heavenly Father, I pray that we seek you first in all of our wisdom, understanding, decisions, and cooperations in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. First, I would like to say, we should start every board meeting with prayer. We need all the help we can get. I would like to know nationally if there's anybody on a school board that will draw a line in the sand and not cross that and not accept federal money if egregious things come with it that can hurt the students. Secondly, we have magnet schools and they have a lot of words that begin with C. I would like to simplify that, especially the last word which is left out. And that's part of the problem why we're so divided and we use everything we can to not listen to one another. Those three words that begin also with C is consideration, collaboration, and compromise. The last word is left out of all the C words for magnet schools. We've got to learn to compromise. No one has all the answers. Thank God. I've been waiting seven years for the Cedar Rapids School Board to respond to me about how much Darwinian evolution is being taught in our schools. Which is better for students to think that they evolved out of the promidal, primordial pool of evolution or to believe that they were created by an all-knowing, all-powerful, everywhere-at-once God who created everything and everything that's in it, that they were actually created by Him? The hundred-and-thirty-nine Psalm thirteen through fifteen. Thank you, Laura, and everyone else.
Our next speaker is Steve Sovereign. Steve is here and would like to speak to the Our next speaker is Tanya Street.
Tanya Street. And my daughter goes to Kennedy and so that's why I'm here. I just want to say, one, I don't know why vaccines are even brought up because it's, you know, the masks are what, you know, people seem to be upset about. Vaccines have been around mandated federally since nineteen oh-five and they've eradicated things like smallpox, polio, rubella, measles, you name it. Vaccines are needed. One person asked, "How many children died?" One is too many. You know, I don't think that should even be a question. Right now, thirty percent of intensive care people are COVID in our hospitals. That is ridiculous. The rate has shot up. Ninety, let's see, as of January eighth, five thousand children have been hospitalized. There have been eighty-two thousand eight-hundred-and-forty-three hospital adminis, admissions. hospital admissions of children since August 1st, 2020. That's a lot, you know. That is ridiculous. Current seven-day average is 797 hospitalizations, which is an increase from 441. This rate is a cause of concern. That's not something that we should slough off. It's concerning. As far as masks, I, you know, I don't care what your beliefs are. I don't want, I don't care what people's beliefs are. But let's say, if you're a Christian and you wear your mask, maybe it should be because you love thy neighbor. If you are a Democrat and you wear a mask, maybe it should be protecting your neighbor. If you're a Republican, it could be about, you know, businesses, your business is staying healthy, your economy continue to thrive. Everybody stays employed. I don't care what your beliefs are, but masks are like, they're needed. You know, my daughter goes to Kennedy. I appreciate the mask mandates. I also like to say that it is not illegal to issue a mandate because the US District Court had, it was Judge Robert Pratt issued a temporary restraining order on the mask, you know, from restraining the mask mandate that Kim Reynolds had ordered. So it is not illegal. This is a necessary precaution for our children, for our communities, you know, to keep them safe. I appreciate the decisions that you guys have made at keeping our children safe. I want to thank you. My daughter thanks you, you know, our families, you know, you guys are protecting our kids and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Rita McCord and I've lived in Cedar Rapids my entire life. If you aren't from here, you might not have experienced all of what Cedar Rapids has to offer. But this is something my mother knew and experienced firsthand when she moved from Madrid, Iowa, here as an 18-year-old immigrant who had only been in the United States for five years with a heart of faith and no fear. Part of that faith helped her escape an abusive husband, get her kids to safety, and always believed in her daughters and appreciated her daughter's education. Over the course of my lifetime, this place has saved me. The show choir at Kennedy High School saved me from depression during a time when mental health care wasn't at the forefront of community discussions. Guidance counselors helped me navigate paperwork to find an entry point to college. Today, I am fortunate to be a teacher with a master's degree who rose out of poverty. I have stories about how timid I was as a child, how shy and scared I was of public speaking or singing or thunder. The education of this place gave me confidence, gave me voice. My upward mobility was possible because of this place. There is a special quality about Cedar Rapids that I am proud to see being gifted to my children from the educators of this place. Lately, a lot of people have been speaking from various communities about this special place. When they speak, it as if there is only one side of the issue and that our board and district have chosen the wrong side, but there is another view, a more hopeful view, a view that touches on what Galatians Chapter 5, verses 22 through 23 calls the fruits of the Spirit, which are love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. And that view is one of appreciation. Overwhelmingly, the teachers in our schools are grateful for the work of this board and Superintendent Bush providing as many mitigation strategies as possible to protect this community during this peak COVID time. Overwhelmingly, as teachers follow rising case counts, hospitalizations, and deaths in Lynn County, teachers seek more mitigations for themselves and their families. Our hospitals have warned us that we will not peak from the Omicron variant until the beginning of February. To help with this, we are seeking extra layers of mitigation. We are seeking this to be protective of our students, our students' families, and our own families, and to keep our schools open. Staff can't teach and we want to be there to teach. Right now, there is a petition in support of this board's mitigation efforts. And after just 24 hours, 291 signatures are on it, maybe more since the start of this meeting. Because this community, this place cares. Thank you so, so much.
Our next speaker is Sean Carey. Sean is here to talk about COVID safety measures.
Hello, Sean Carey from Hiawatha. First off, I wanted to stand up here and say thank you. My daughter is in the school district as of the beginning of this year. Thank you for the masks in class. I feel a lot safer having her go to class with students and faculty wearing masks. And I know that we took it off the agenda for the night, but the testing requirement with the vaccine exemption is something that seemed reasonable to me and also made me feel that her education would be in a secure place. Appreciate your vaccine clinics and schools and wanted to share my thanks and my wife's thanks for making school and education a safe place for my daughter. For future consideration, I'd like to request maybe looking into high-quality masks available for faculty and students such as KNKF95s and 95s, as well as wastewater testing to test for numbers of asymptomatic students in schools. I don't know if that's possible, but I'll also make the request of the City of Cedar Rapids and their wastewater department, too. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for your, for your time, your service, and your efforts to keep our school safe. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Erin Kronbaugh. Erin is here to thank the board.
Erin Kronbaugh, Cedar Rapids. Some of you may know that I have certainly disagreed with the board and some of the board's decisions over the years. But it really bothers me how the board members were treated with such disrespect, both as a whole and individually at the last board meeting. And just in case anybody is following, Lynn County's positivity rate was 36% today, according to the CDC. And that's crazy. So I really just want to thank you for your voluntary service and remind people that this is a voluntary job that you've put yourself in front of us for. And thank you for taking the information that's out there and making the decisions that you have so far. I work in healthcare. It's not easy to make these kinds of decisions. And thank you for protecting the staff and the students of this district with your masking requirements. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Lawrence Winklowski. Lawrence is here to speak about hate and hypocrisy.
Lawrence Winklowski. I'm going to refrain from giving my address because there's all these women stalking me. I worked for 16 years. I've been attending board meetings and even some city council meetings that have had contentious issues. And looking back, there were times I wish I took a different approach. However, tonight will not be one of them. My comments tonight are issue independent. I attend board meetings to hear about issues that affect our school, not to listen to Bible thoppers preaching scripture, and not to listen about civil code from individuals who don't understand the basic laws and procedures that govern these meetings. Then there are the creepy adult stalkers who take pictures of administrators and board meetings, board members. I attend school board meetings to be with the community members who respect these meetings, respect all the people who attend these meetings, and people who care about the district and its issues. I don't attend to be with people who act like mechanical, symbol-banking monkeys. Since the pandemic and the protests of 2020, parents and students are disrespecting school staff more and more, making teachers, teaching more difficult than ever. I hear about good educators who are debating their future in education. I want these educators to stay. We need these educators to stay. Daily, our superintendent, all the other administrators, teachers, staff, and volunteers work tirelessly, doing their best to educate our children in a safe environment. I am grateful for everyone's hard work and sacrifice, including two people I call friends, Lorraine Bush and Nancy Humbles. Difficult professional decisions are made, and no one deserves the pathetic personal attacks and insults that have been made at the decision-makers. They deserve nothing less than respect. I find it hypocritical that people recite scripture like Christians and then show disrespect and hate to our district leaders. Doesn't scripture talk about loving thy neighbor? Are these people Christians or heretics? I find it hypocritical that people who believe in their narrative that the school district is endangering their children by making them wear masks are themselves endangering their children by sending them to school. Should we be contacting DHS? Then there are the pathetic people who think it is amusing to yell out pedophiles and those who support the overall narrative. Why can't you comprehend why saying this is wrong on so many levels? Our district does not participate in sexual assaults in our district, of any type in our district. People who continue this narrative should be banned from all district property and activities. With our freedoms come responsibilities, including our freedom of speech. If you cannot respect, be respectful at these meetings. Stay at home. If you don't like the school district, the policies and the rules, go to one of the other 356 districts in the state. After this many, meeting, many of the people who attend these should go up and apologize to the school board and superintendent for the way that they've treated them the last several meetings. Thank you very much.
Bridgette is here, representing Bridge Under the Bridge, and her topic is CRCSD.
My name is Bridgette Williams-Robinson and I live in Cedar Rapids on the southwest side of town. I'm a mom, first and foremost. I have five going on, six kids in the district. I have a kindergartner going into school next year, maybe a preschooler, hopefully. We'll see how things go. But the year before, we had masks where our kids were at home. It was, it was terrible. It was one of the worst years to date. My kids didn't learn anything. They were never on their computers. They were only watching YouTube. Like, it was, it was terrible. Their test scores went down, their ambitions went down, their creativity went down. And going back to school with the mask mandate was the best thing that our family could have done. Because if one kid gets sick, everybody gets sick. And that just trickles. And it's a terrible effect. And shutting down a family like that in such big numbers is always going to hinder what the community has to offer. Because now you're getting, you're getting someone in every single school sick. Because I have kids in every single grade level of this school system. I also want to appreciate the board because they deal with so much on a daily basis. It's not even fair how people are disrespectful. It's not fair how people take up so much of their time and their energy and they're complaining about how their kids need more help and they need more support. But we're, we're taking all this time, giving it to something that doesn't matter. Masks aren't a big deal. People have to wear them all the time. Doctors wear them every single day. Surgeons stand up in a 20-hour surgery and they wear a mask because they're healing your loved ones. So if you're, if it's such a big deal, take your kids and put them in a district where they don't have to wear masks. That's not that, that's not that difficult. Also, there's so many, there's so many people talking about assaults and how their kids' freedoms are being taken away. Let's stop taking, let's stop talking about that stuff and start dealing with the actual offenders. Let's put some effort into that. Let's get a big group of parents and start going to the, the people who are actually hurting our kids. Let's, let's get a group system about that. There's so many people out here harming our kids that are actually hurting them. Sex offenders are walking because no one's actually going to court to testify. There's so many more issues that matter other than what we're talking about. We're, we're using so many tax dollars that our school can use towards other stuff. Our kids deserve better and they deserve more time being put into their efforts instead of these parents who are just complaining about nothing. So I want to thank the board and I want to thank Cedar Rapids for doing the right thing. And I appreciate you guys. And I'm sorry that other people aren't so terrible.
That concludes our speakers for this evening.
To all of our speakers this evening, this concludes the public comment portion of our meeting. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or separate vote?
Thank you, President Tominski. I need to pull item BA-22-206 for separate consideration.
Okay. We've already removed 22-1106. Are there any other items? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda without those two items?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Now, this is a roll call vote.
Ms. Brock?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
President Tominski.
Aye.
And then for a separate vote, we'll do the BA 22-206.
All those in favor.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That, the last item on the agenda is a review and discussion of our legislative advocacy activities. I'll turn the meeting over to you, Superintendent Bush, to get us started.
Thank you so much. And certainly would invite conversation from the board on this. This is a high-level review. Just want to start with a thank you. Before winter break, we had a board work session. And a huge thank you to our legislators who were able to attend that work session that evening. We were able to get them from across our region, all in one location digitally that evening, to discuss what has started to date in the legislative work in Des Moines. So thought we would review tonight again. This was reviewed in that work session, just a high-level overview of our district priorities and advocacy's for our kids here in Cedar Rapids. And then just an open discussion for the board regards to things that perhaps you've thought about since that work session or highlights or other conversations that you'd like to bring to, into light. So that evening of December 15th, thanks if you want to back up one, Justin. Thanks. Our board of directors attended, legislators attended. It was a Zoom meeting that invited the public. We had several members of our public attend that meeting that evening. We reviewed the Urban Education Network information that night. That was a high-level overview. But we really zoomed in on Cedar Rapids Community School District's legislative priorities for this upcoming session. Also aligned, talked a lot about the governor's priorities and how a lot of what we're advocating for aligns for aligns with the state level advocacy as well. And then that current context of what is happening in the current state of Iowa and our legislators had great feedback for us that evening of bringing some of these advocacy notes to light. So just to move forward here, there were five major priorities that we zoomed in on that evening and will continue to zoom in on. So those five focus priorities are investing in Iowa's future and that's really about funding for our schools. I'll provide a little bit of context for all these in just a minute. Secondly is our student opportunity with an equity lens. Thirdly is our teacher administrator and staff shortage. This is a statewide, truly a nationwide issue. Mental health services, again, not just a Cedar Rapids issue, it's a much broader context than that. And then also what district authority, which is really about that home base rule and what we're hoping to maintain as a district. So first and foremost, under the first area is that invest in Iowa's future. What SSA stands for state supplemental aid. Every year, there's a percentage that we advocate for in order to, this is what allows us for general fund growth opportunity within our district. To break down our request of 5% state supplemental aid and just for context, last year SSA was at 2.6%. So the reason for the 5% advocacy, and we did request more than 2.6% as many districts did last year, is 3.75% for our continued need and support of our general fund in regards to be competitive in this work environment for our staff, that we can continue to offer salaries to our employees that are competitive and also attract employees. For the 1.25%, that's a breakout to continually focus on our staff members. They too are parents, they too have children and how could we leverage some sort of benefit to them in regards to childcare and other strategies to attract folks to our profession and hopefully support the workforce needs that we are seeing across our, across our community. And that also means exploring childcare for the greater community as well and we understand that we are a childcare provider. Secondly, our second area of advocacy is the student opportunity focused in on equity. And this is an additional specific ask for resources for English language learning, which is demographic that is exponentially increasing in our specific district, minority population, as well as early childhood preschool students. Again, early childhood and preschool is not a required service in the state of Iowa. We would like to be able to provide as many opportunities as possible, so we're asking for possibilities about ways, ways we can increase funding for early childhood as well as the focus of the resource for our minority groups in English language learning on focusing on closing those student equity gaps within our system. Third area, teacher administrator and staff shortage. There's a lot of opportunity here of ways that we can think differently as a state. That's going to mean some legislative language. So license reciprocity, this door has been opened in regards to administrators with some neighboring states. In the past, there has not been reciprocity with other states for licensure requirements. For example, someone may be an administrator in the state of Wisconsin, but they come to Iowa, they could have a lot of years of experience, but they are not granted an Iowa license without several courses of, like, in order to gain that licensure. Just recently, that reciprocity was granted for administrators. We have not seen that reciprocity yet for teacher licensure. And of course, we understand that we want at least the same type of expectations, but would there be a possibility of creating mechanisms for that license reciprocity from other states? Secondly, loan forgiveness programs. For a long time, this has been possible for shortage areas, but it has not necessarily been possible for all areas of teaching. In the, right now, it's, we have a global shortage in our profession, but in the past, perhaps it targeted special education and/or, for example, math or science teachers, which were hard to hire areas. There were loan forgiveness opportunities, which meant teach for two years in a specific area and then you could have a student loan forgiveness. We also wanna zoom in and focus on diversifying our workforce. How can we continually attract candidates to our district and what are some strategies that could be used that we can continue to diversify our workforce? And then also Iowa already has a great structure around Iowa future ready workforce. A lot of this focus focuses on advanced manufacturing and some really great industry. We think education should be on one of those pathways in Iowa future ready workforce. We are the workforce that prepares every other workforce, so it would be ideal if we were part of that Iowa future ready workforce development. Fourth area, mental health services. We are, we have had some, some success, I would say, over the past couple of years in regards to some structures that have been considered. However, we still have a ways to go. So it used to be that mental health lived in one bucket over here, education lived in another bucket over here and we had to ask for a lot of bridging opportunity. We've gotten better, I think. Our own district has some really tight partnerships and great relationships with folks within our community, thanks to some mechanisms we've been able to use. However, we still have a long way to go in regards to mental health services. So, and access for our families. So we're looking for additional structures and funding to support mental health professionals in order to eliminate the shortage. There's some long waiting lists for families who are looking for those services and how can we assist by perhaps looking at a pool together between education and mental health, resources for better care, resources for continued professional learning. And we recognize that we are educators, we certainly have school counselors, but we are not necessarily mental health certified professionals. So how do we continue to build the bridges so that we can gain better access for all of our families who are seeking services? We greatly appreciate our partnerships there, but how do we create even more opportunity in the future for our families? And then lastly, the last area of advocacy is around district authority. Iowa Home Rule under Iowa Code is really about local decisions based on the district's context. We continually advocate for flexibility and so one example of specific ask could be that our district is asking for, based on our local context, our local decision making, could we use general fund to pay for preschool expansion? And is that a possibility based on the needs that we're getting from our community? If we were to able to include that in what we call state supplemental aid and head count preschool, that could make a significant difference to so many four-year-olds and families in our district. You heard one at the mic tonight. And so that would be a great opportunity and locally, would we have the opportunity to make that kind of recommendation? So those are just some examples and those are the five areas and I would welcome feedback questions. Board, you've been working hard on this for the past month plus, so however, I can be supportive.
Thank you Superintendent. Vice President Garlock, do you have some additional insight?
Yes, I always have something to say on this topic, you know that. I, I can only reiterate what Superintendent Bush has said in terms of the five priorities. I would ask the community, those of you here in the room and perhaps listening at home, that public education is the bedrock of our community and right now, we need your support. Everyone sitting at this table will do everything, we will do everything in our power to advocate for the students here in Cedar Rapids, but we need all of you to, to join us in that advocacy. All five of these issues are critical to the students in Cedar Rapids. Just a little additional background in terms of school funding, because whether we like it or not, our staff really likes to be paid and they like to be paid commensurate to the work that they do. And you, if you are a parent and you have children here in the district, you know that these last two years have been very difficult for our staff and they have been working above and beyond. And so it takes, it takes funding in order to do that. I would remind everyone listening that our state currently is sitting on a budget surplus of nearly 1.24 billion dollars. Now, it is up to us to let our elected officials know how you would like them to spend that money. We have a lot of needs. Our students have a lot of needs, our families have a lot of needs. It's been, it's been a difficult two years. So I'm asking all of you for support. As these initiatives and these bills come up in Des Moines, please, when the call goes out, make sure that you are emailing your state legislator and, and asking for the appropriate action that will help our students here in Cedar Rapids. Sorry, that was a bit of a sermon, but.
Riz, do you have any additional questions, comments?
I, I think Cindy pretty much covered it, but when we're saying, asking the community to become involved, so are we saying writing letters and then contacting the legislators and even going to the Hill? Are those some of the things that we should be advocating for?
Correct. As, as particular pieces of legislation come forward, it, it gets a little harried because things move quickly, but we do need the public to email their state legislator. They need to call their state legislators. So definitely those two things from the public. And yes, for board members, we do have a day on the Hill on February 1st and I would encourage all of you to think about joining us. It's, it's an opportunity to talk to our legislators in their native habitat and talk to them about these issues, so, correct.
Director Bocherting?
I would like to add that that day on the Hill that is happening February 1st is being organized by the Iowa Association of School Boards, which is separate from the Urban Education Network. But a lot of the, the legislative priorities are crossover and are the same between these two organizations this year. Iowa Association of School Boards represents all of the districts, urban education obviously is the urban districts. The, the issues are the same, it's just a matter of magnitude, it's just a matter of volume based on the population of the, the student enrollment. But I think that they're an ally that could also be helpful and that there's resources to help guide letters and asks and other school boards across the state. In addition to the surplus that Director Garlock mentioned, there is also a rainy day fund. And of that rainy day fund, which is over 300 million dollars, 97% of it has come from shortchanging public education. People are saying that, that public education is being funded at 60%. It's being funded at 60% of that line item, but not 60% of the general budget. The remaining 40% is being swept into the rainy day fund. So that is money that's been designated for public education that hasn't been spent on public education. I think it's important for people to know that. And then I did have a question about loan forgiveness. In the past, I think there had been a program where, with educators, where at sign of schools or schools in need of improvement, not necessarily critical fail areas, but, but sign of schools that they also had some loan forgiveness there. Is that still used?
So there, there are some specific programs. Many times there, so for example, this is not our state, but if folks would be recruited to teach in Alaska, for example, once upon a time, there would be loan forgiveness because it's so rural and very difficult to teach in that specific area. Yes, once upon a time, there was also for Title I schools in specific districts. That is not specifically applicable right now to Cedar Rapids, but that is the type of programming that we're, we are discussing. Or it's hard to say right now. This is the first year in my career, I'm a high school teacher, but I've always, you know, been in K-12 systems. It's the first year where districts struggle to hire an elementary school teacher and that is usually a pretty saturated workforce applicant pool. And it's just reduced and reduced and reduced across the nation, really. Over the past 10 years, 30% fewer people are selecting education as their profession. And so the reality is that this is really coming to light for all of us as we have retirees. We have fewer people coming in and selecting education as their profession. And so it is more than just a job. This is, this is truly a life commitment. You've heard our educators tonight, this is a life commitment to kids and we so value that commitment, but it's getting more and more challenging, especially when we're competing with other professions. And so that comes back to what Director Garlock said. We need to make sure that educators are getting a competitive salary, especially in the beginning years that are competitive with other beginning salaries with other professions so that folks are valued and that is, that's, that's a challenge. That's, so yes, there's opportunity for loan forgiveness, but there's also opportunity just to compensate differently for our educators.
Additional comments, questions? I do appreciate the session that was, that was put on, the board was involved. Noreen, you just did a fantastic job, I think, of aligning that. And I do just wanna say our, I think our legislators are fantastic in this area. I mean, they seem very responsive when, when sessions like that are set up. So for us to be able to, as a board, build relationships with our legislators, for them to meet you and to get the information of what's important to our district, I appreciated the way the alignment at a state level, the things that are prioritized and the things that are prioritized for our district. There's plenty of places for us to find some common ground and take some positive actions. So I appreciate you sharing this information again tonight. If anybody wasn't able to join that session, I know that's recorded, so you can absolutely go out and, and see that, like it's on the Cedar Rapids Community School District's YouTube channel.
That was December 15th was that work session date. And just as you just said, sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
That childcare and, and workforce and mental health are definitely our governor's priorities as well, it's legislator priorities. So how do we just all get on the same page and make sure that we're getting those resources to, to our communities and families as needed?
Great. Well, thank you so much for that information. Before the meeting adjourns, we'd like to recognize one of our staff members with a moment of silence. I'll turn the meeting over to Scott Wing.
Board of Directors, Superintendent Bush, Secretary Day, Transportation Manager for Cedar Rapids School District. It's a heavy heart that I come to inform you that Mike Staub has passed away on November 8th, 2021. Mike was a van driver for the Cedar Rapids schools for two years. Mike had a fun, outgoing personality that resonated with the students that he transported. Mike was the ultimate team member, always willing to do extra or volunteering to help out others. He was also very friendly with his coworkers and often had a joyful joke or a heartening story to share. Mike grew up working in the Staub family bowling centers, Lancer Lanes, Castle and May City. Naturally, he was a great bowler traveling for tournaments across the country. Mike is survived by his wife Patty, a daughter, three grandchildren and six siblings. As we observe this moment of silence in memory of Mike Staub, let us remember the lives of the students and staff that he has positively impacted as an employee of our school district. Thank you very much.
Scott, our condolences go out to the entire family and your team and this community for that great loss. With no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.